For November. Twenty twenty one. Roll call.
Okay. All right, so I'll just go down the list. Chair Vasquez.
Here.
Vice Chair Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Mayor Young.
Here.
Mayor Byrd.
Here.
Mayor Price.
Here.
Mayor Cott.
Here.
Mayor Rolet. Mayor McConnell.
Here.
Supervisor Hannigan.
Here.
Supervisor Brown.
Yes.
Supervisor Sperring.
Present.
Supervisor Mashburn.
Here.
So you have a confirmed quorum. You're only minus one person tonight.
Thank you. With that, I asked for a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Steve, did you move it?
Harry, Harry moved it.
Oh, all right. Harry moved it and Mitch seconded. A roll call.
You want to do a roll call? I'm happy to just, since we're recording it, I'm happy to do just a show of hands.
All those approving.
I see all the heads. I see all the hands up. Okay.
All right.
That's good.
And then the next action is confirmation of the virtual meeting. Do I have a motion on that?
Brown, some moves.
Aaron seconded. Again, put your hands up. You approve it.
Thank you.
I'm gonna move the agenda around a little bit. I'm gonna take public comment and consent, put that towards the end. Supervisor Sperring needs to make his presentation, but we need to do the, have the discussion on the item five of the housing allotment. Is there anything different in the housing allotment that we didn't see before?
There, John, there is not this. Everything you see before you today is exactly what you, what the four Cs approved unanimously back in September. The only difference that the, we've gone through a forty-five day appeal period to get to where we are today. The appeal period ended on the eighth with no appeals.
All right. Does anyone want to hear all of that all over again? Or do we have a motion to?
So move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Raise your hands for approval.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Hey Matt, you can go.
See you later.
All right, so the, the next item is item seven. Number one. Jim, this is, you're gonna take the lead on this one?
Yeah, yeah, John, thank you. You know, this presentation that you're gonna see an issue that, you know, we're all dealing with in Solano County. You're gonna hear about a regional wide effort to address homelessness. Known as the Regional Impact Council, the RIC. I refer to it as the RIC. And I serve on the Regional Impact Council Steering Committee along with a number of elected officials, business leaders, nonprofit leaders around the Bay Area. The Regional Impact Council Steering Committee is made up of homelessness services, affordable housing advocates, philanthropy, transportation, public health, and economic development. And one of the cornerstones is that, you know, we need to make many of the homeless people economically healthy. And so you're gonna hear some of that tonight. And for over a year, the RIC has worked to develop a regional action plan. It's called the RAP. And the RAP sets a goal of reducing unsheltered homeless in the Bay Area by seventy-five percent within three years. Through a combination of interim housing, permanent housing, prevention, and this is efforts to significantly reduce the number of people who become homeless in the first place. And the Regional Impact Council is convened and facilitated by All Home. A regional organization that is addressing the homelessness crisis in our region. And as all we know, the homeless moves around throughout the region. And so this is a regional approach to help deal with this issue. And I think a lot of you are gonna find this interesting. And presenting tonight will be Ken Kirky. He's the Chief Partnership Officer. Several of you know Ken, Ken from both ABAG and MTC. He's very familiar with Solano County. His fingerprints are on a lot of the projects that have been built in just about all of the cities and into county. Has been a great supporter of many of the projects that we've done here in Solano County. And with him is Gail Gilman. And she's the Chief Strategy Officer of All Home to present the regional action plan. And so with that, Ken, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
He Supervisor Sperring, it is nice to see a lot of familiar faces, albeit on Zoom. Thanks for, thanks for having us on your agenda this evening. We have some slides to share. Deanna, if you wanna, whoever is, there we go. Next slide, please. So the supervisor provided a really good intro. I'll, I'll give you a little bit more information on All Home to start things off. So All Home is an organization that started roughly two years ago. In twenty nineteen. Focused really on two very, very big issues. One, the existing homelessness crisis in the Bay Area, which as you all know, has really expanded and exploded across the region. From, you know, what at one time was something concentrated in a handful of our more urban neighborhoods and is now a region-wide challenge. And also, as Supervisor Sperring said, getting underneath that issue around a lot of the housing insecurity and lack of economic and social mobility issues that impact people with extremely low income. So those are folks region-wide that, for a household of three, make roughly less than thirty-seven thousand a year. So a lot of them are working people, roughly half. They may be security guards, receptionists, retail clerks, custodians, a lot of people who in the past may not have lived in the best neighborhood or the fanciest home, but they could afford to live in the Bay Area. And in recent years, they've become very precariously housed. Next slide, please. So first, just to look at Solano County, you know, from the last point in time count in twenty nineteen, you see roughly eleven hundred and fifty-one people were counted as, as homeless, like the rest of the Bay Area. The majority of them were unsheltered. That's true in all of our counties. And it's, it's a generally, it's generally thought that the point in time counts undercount homelessness, that, you know, that it's a one-night deal. People go out, go around the region, try to find people that are homeless, and you can imagine people are missed. So it's not perfect. And given COVID, it's estimated that these numbers have gone up. One thing that Solano also has in common with the other Bay Area counties, to a large extent, is that there's a lot of racial inequity in terms of who is homeless. The, the homeless population in the Bay Area is disproportionately black and brown, and that's, that's reflected here in the percentages on this slide. Next slide, please. So after All Home was launched, we realized pretty quickly that a small, if, if mighty nonprofit could not on its own, address these two big challenges that I mentioned. And we moved forward in working with a lot of our partners to create what is known as the Regional Impact Council or the RIC. It is, as Supervisor Sperring said, a roundtable of a range of folks from elected state legislators, mayors, a number of county supervisors, as well as subject matter experts across a whole range of sectors that touch on homelessness as well as the business community. It includes a steering committee, which is the committee that the supervisor serves on, which, as the name suggests, kind of guides the work along with a group of co-chairs. And includes a technical committee of those subject matter experts. And the RIC started meeting as it happened in March of twenty twenty. So just as COVID was bearing down on us, the RIC was kicking off. Every meeting has been virtual. There have been a lot of them. And in the first little bit less than a year, the Regional Impact Council developed what is called the Regional Action Plan or RAP, which is the first of its kind regional plan to really try to tackle homelessness and housing insecurity, which I'll get to in a moment. And the RIC is now working on what is called Phase Two, and this is to get to a lot of the underlying economic and social mobility issues for that population that I mentioned of extremely low-income individuals. You know, I, I was involved in a lot of housing issues when I was planning director at MTC and ABAG for years. And one of the things I was not aware of was just how large the population of extremely low-income people is. It's roughly a million out of eight million people in the Bay Area. And just how vulnerable they are to homelessness ultimately, but also just being precariously housed and not having opportunities to secure housing and secure a better life for themselves and their families. Next slide, please. So building upon a lot of work that has already happened around the region and a lot of good work over the years that has helped people in the region, including in Solano County. The Regional Action Plan was structured and is structured to build upon that. It does include this very audacious goal of reducing unsheltered homelessness by seventy-five percent by twenty twenty-four. And it does so through a very different approach than the Bay Area has generally employed to address homelessness. Next slide, please. So achieve the seventy-five percent reduction, what the Regional Impact Council has said, and why they believe this is possible. It's because it calls for an approach of doing things simultaneously rather than pitting solutions one against the other. For a long time in the Bay Area, there have been advocates who have said, the only thing that's gonna work is permanent housing with supportive services. Some people definitely need permanent housing. And the Regional Impact Council's RAP says that ultimately everyone needs some type of permanent housing solution. But with thirty-five thousand people unhoused across the region, people need to be brought indoors. So they can stabilize their lives, so they can begin to heal from, in some cases, years on the street. And so that they can move to a permanent housing solution. So looking region-wide at the, at the unsheltered population, the one-two-four framework, as it's called, calls for for every one interim housing solution. So that could be a navigation center. It could be a tiny home. It could be a range of different solutions for interim housing, generally not congregate shelter. Congregate shelter is both not very workable in this pandemic that we're still in, but it also hasn't proven to be very successful in terms of really allowing people to successfully move to permanent housing. So for every one solution of interim housing, there would be two permanent housing solutions. So interim housing is not the end goal. It's the first step in the process to get people to whatever permanent housing solution will work. And for many people, that's a, that's a housing voucher. They don't need a lot of supportive services. They simply need to be able to pay the rent. For some people, they will need supportive services, given some of the disabilities they have. And when that's needed, the RAP calls for that. And finally, the Regional Action Plan calls for something that is largely not been employed in the region at all. And that is a prevention framework on the front end. When you have a million people in the region who have relatively low incomes, given the really high cost of living in the Bay Area, and you have so many people who are precariously housed, you also have a lot of people who could have one hiccup in life, a sick parent, a sick kid, getting laid off. What have you, the things that happen to all of us at some point in life. And with no real personal safety net, they can drift into homelessness relatively quickly. What the RAP says is that it's much more effective to have some type of interventions in place for those people, so they don't become homeless. And they get back on their feet before they have all the negative impacts of, of becoming homeless. And it's also very, very cost-effective, because prevention solutions are much less expensive than interim housing or permanent housing. Lastly, before I turn it over to Gail, I'll say, the one-two-four is a ratio when looking at the nine counties regionally. And it's really important to emphasize, this is not a one-size-fits-all. You all know Solano County is different from Alameda, which is different from Santa Clara, which is different from Sonoma and so on. And that's true relative to homelessness. So the ratio will vary from county to county, and that's okay. This really isn't about the ratio or having a fixed one-size-fits-all solution. It's about having an integrated approach that can really drive the homelessness numbers down and, and keep them down from this very high level that they've been at for quite a long time. So with that, I will turn it over to my colleague, Gail.
Thank you, Ken, and so delighted to be with all of you this evening. So I'm just gonna walk through a couple of ways of how we actualize this framework and make this happen. So All Home can assist counties and work collaboratively, particularly when counties sign on to the pledge to reduce unsheltered homelessness by seventy-five percent by the end of twenty twenty-four. By three things. You know, first, we can evaluate. We can look at your existing resources. We can look at city resources, the continuum of care, the joint power, JPA in Solano County, and sort of figure out what resources are in place. And how we can also really capitalize on the unprecedented federal and state resources that are flowing to the counties. We can then align those resources to this framework. And as Ken said, every county is different. It might be one-two-four in Solano County, one investment interim housing for every, for that, every two doubling of investment in permanent housing solutions. And then really doubling down to prevent that inflow with prevention dollars. But in other places, it can be different. And then we can advocate. We can advocate for more resources for Solano, for the counties, for the cities. And we can sort of work both at the state level to ensure that proper technical assistance and, and other sort of assets that the state has to offer right now with over, you know, a one billion dollar investment for the state of California over the next two years is really flowing to Solano County and making the right impact. Next slide, please. So this framework that we're showing here today is based off the pure model of one-two-four. And this is based off the twenty nineteen point in time count. We know these numbers have changed since the pandemic, but this is purely for illustrational purposes. So if we were to really reduce unsheltered homelessness by seventy-five percent, we would be bringing indoors around eight hundred and sixty people between now and the end of twenty twenty-four. And we would be providing to sort of stem that inflow, which I cannot emphasize enough. We would need to provide about eleven hundred households with targeted homelessness prevention services, which is cash payment for rents, utilities, and other things. And this chart just sort of illustrates sort of the prevention interventions, how much permanent housing placements would need to take place, and how much interim shelter we would need to produce, which is about a hundred and fifteen, this is beds per year winding down in twenty twenty-three. Next slide, please. And then based on a aggregated cost model for the nine Bay Area counties, we know it might be more or less for Solano, and it also depends on your nonprofit sort of ecosystem. The cost, which I know might seem daunting, cumulatively though, is two hundred and sixteen million. And what you see in the beginning years is a big outlay in capital cost. This is capital to build or construct both interim housing or affordable and supportive housing in the community. The operating expenses encompass both social services, behavioral health component. It also encompasses operating subsidies, rental subsidies. So that the folks can be subsidized in their rent, either in the private market or in affordable and supportive housing. And so we can operate the interim housing. We don't project costs here for the prevention. Prevention is usually between four and seven hundred dollars, four to seven hundred dollars per household. Next, please. So one thing we really want to highlight to everyone, and particularly to public and elected officials, is that there is a difference between homelessness prevention and eviction prevention. And all of this is important, and we really want to see a continuum. But this is really, I would argue, as someone who has almost twenty-five years in the housing and homelessness space in the Bay Area. This is really sort of the game changer, the innovation that All Home is really trying to get all of the counties to sign on to. So there's eviction prevention. There was the ERAP and Care Dollars that came to help folks who'd lost their employment during the pandemic. And that mostly focuses on people who might make up the fifty, even higher, sixty, seventy, eighty percent of area median income. Who, and who, who are at risk of eviction, people who seek traditional rental assistance. But All Home is piloting, and so is Los Angeles County, a much more predictive way to know who, who is at risk of losing their housing will actually end up on our streets and end up experiencing homelessness. Folks who, in the first bucket, they might double up, they might become more severely rent burden, they might leave the area. And that's anti-displacement, which we do not want to see, particularly for our communities of color. But the homeless prevention really targets folks at imminent risk to be on our streets, to be living in their cars, or, or ending up in our shelters. And so those are folks who are at imminent risk, who usually are doubled up. They might be leaseholders, but many of them are not leaseholders. They're living in non-traditional housing situations, and they make less than thirty percent of area median income. And for the aggregated Bay Area that's under thirty-seven thousand a year, I'm pretty positive, if I'm remembering correctly, it's close to thirty-three thousand dollars a year for Solano County. Individuals in this category have, have other predictive factors, like previous episodes of homelessness. They might live in a high-impact community or neighborhood. They might have had histories of incarceration or foster care. We then also really want to fund homelessness diversion. You know, that we talk a lot about chronic homelessness in our communities, but our system actually creates chronic homelessness. Part of that definition is continuously homeless for a year or more. If we had a system that was more nimble, that could quickly rehouse individuals, they would never become chronically homeless in the first place. So we really want to see, particularly for families and young adults under the age of twenty-four, the system respond to folks who lose their housing. Identify them quickly, help them with a rental subsidy, help them move into a shared housing situation. So they never become chronically homeless in the first place, and then develop those debilitating mental health and substance abuse issues. We know so many folks who have been chronically homeless are struggling with. Next slide, please. So, you know, All Home was founded to do a regional approach. We're taking a page out of the pandemic. When we were founded in twenty nineteen, no one, if someone had said I was gonna live through a global pandemic, I would have thought they were being silly. But we saw our health directors all act in unison. And we know that if we, if we can engage all nine counties to tackle this issue effectively, it can make a difference. You don't need a passport to go from American Canyon to Vallejo. And we shouldn't treat poverty and homelessness siloed that way. We want to see a collaborative working relationship with all of the counties. Next slide, please. So now I think it's the opportunity where Ken and I would love to answer your questions in hopes that this committee and this group is supportive of the regional, regional, the RAP and the RIC.
Thank you for that. Board member comments? Raise your hand. Jim?
Yeah, you know, I just want to thank Ken and Gail. You know, I felt it was important that the four Cs saw this presentation, you know. And it's, you know, as we get into this, the, the larger the response or, you know, in numbers, more counties and cities that are involved in this, the, the more we can compete for funding. The strategies are universal, can be used throughout the region. And as Gail said, it's not one-size-fits-all, but the basic premise of this really works. And so I, I felt it was important to bring it to the four Cs. I certainly hope my supervisor colleagues will look into this a little bit further and, and really look at doing the All Home pledge and seeing what we can do to help in a, in a regional effort to compete both for those state and federal funds.
Thank you, Jim. I do have four people with their hands up. Monica, Mary Young, and then Aaron and Mitch. Monica?
I just, I'm glad we're not making a decision tonight, because I need to do more research and understand where we're going. But I do like the, the initial concept, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Young?
Thank you. The point-in-time survey back at the beginning of the presentation showed numbers for twenty fifteen, seventeen, and nineteen for Solano County. Were there point-in-time surveys done for twenty and twenty-one? I realize we had a pandemic, but did we do a count anyway?
I don't believe that Solano County did. They weren't done nationally, so most places did not. There were a few places in the Bay Area that essentially took a stab at it, but I, I don't think one took place in Solano County.
And, and the other thing that struck me about those numbers is that they were essentially static. They didn't show a big increase between twenty fifteen and twenty nineteen, which was surprising. I, I agree that there was probably an undercount there. But I'm curious if you've got any insight into why the numbers did not increase in Solano like they did in the rest of the Bay Area.
Maybe I'll give it a quick shot, and then, Gail, you can, you can say what I missed. You know, the numbers did go up, Mayor, significantly in a number of Bay Area counties during that same period. Alameda Counties, for example, went through the roof. Opens quadrupled over five years. And I think that there has been a spillover effect essentially into other parts of, of, of the region and adjacent counties and so forth that may not have been captured in Solano County's point-in-time counts. But I think, you know, those of us who, who know the county and have been around and looked at it over the years know there are more homeless people living outdoors and so forth, almost everywhere in the Bay Area than there was several years ago.
And that you think is true in Solano as well, even though the point-in-time numbers are relatively static over that six-year period?
It certainly seems so. It, it certainly seems so in terms of service calls, but also just the way it's impacting transportation corridors and so forth, and, and where there are encampments where there just weren't in the past. Okay, that would seem to be true.
All right, thank you.
The only thing I was gonna add, Mayor Young, is you will be doing a count on January, I believe it's the fifteenth, nationwide. Solano County will be doing their twenty twenty-two count. Normally, the results don't come out till the summer, so we will see. But we're anticipating an uptake in all counties due to the pandemic.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Aaron?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate the, the presentation. It's, looks very promising. I do have concerns about the how this work happens. It, you don't speak to that. You just show a beginning and an end. And I feel like that middle, for me, is what is really important on how that works. We've had a number of attempts at doing exactly what you're proposing or what could be possible. And I'm just concerned that it's not a realistic number. I do want to speak to the point-in-time count. We do one every year in Solano County. The difference in the numbers, as I recall going back, because it was an anomaly, and it was noticed at the board that it was an anomaly that the, that particular year was such a, a deep reduction in the count. And yes, they're never accurate. We know there's more than homeless people that are actually counted on the point-in-time count. But what, what I understood from the contractor that the county worked with for the organization of the PIT is that in some years, they do a much deeper dive than they do in others. And it's almost like a, this year is a much deeper dive than the next year, and then the next year, you know, it's kind of an every other year. So there is some clarity around why those numbers were as low as they were. But I think that like what was shared, I, we know that the homeless count in Solano County has, is much greater than what has been reported and is growing at a exponential rate. So I'm all for supporting any attempts and opportunities to help alleviate homelessness in our community, not just for those who are experiencing this situation, but the, for, for the communities themselves. It's a very unhealthy, also pandemic situation in terms of homelessness. But, you know, the garbage that's created, the mental health that goes untreated, they, you know, all of the things that we all fully understand are challenges. And I've always been a huge proponent of a regional approach, because homelessness isn't limited to one city or one region or one county. It's, it's the entire area, and we are all, in some cases, it can be whack-a-mole. I mean, even with our own cities, it's whack-a-mole. Which is not a solution at all. So I look forward to learning more, and I want to thank Supervisor Sperring for bringing So I look forward to learning more, and I want to thank Supervisor Sperring for bringing All Home to the four Cs. I want to recall that on Tuesday, Mayor McConnell, was it the force, was this the group that was requested to come back to the city of Vallejo?
Yes, yes, it was. And we've been in conversations with staff of the city of Vallejo on some ideas they have, supporting them with some initiatives they want to do. But yes, you are you are correct.
Okay. And then the you've you've been in business now since twenty nineteen. And I know you have, there's a tremendous amount of experience leading this charge, which, you know, Ken, I know you, I remember you from MTC and A-Bag. And you're brilliant. I, I, that makes up for years of experience. Is this how that works? Or outcomes? I mean, you know, what are some of the successes that you've seen since twenty nineteen?
Well, I think, first of all, thank you. That's very kind of you. You know, and in terms of the hows, we would be very happy to come to the board and talk about some of the detail. One of the steps in progress was, of course, just creating this Regional Impact Council, getting it off the ground. But I think the regional action plan was a really good first step. We are now working with Contra Costa County, where the board unanimously endorsed the RAP. And so we're working with their staff and their continuum of care, folks in that county, to do exactly what Gail outlined, to look at where resources are being spent now. What is the funding gap? What is the service need gap? And how can that gap be filled to actually achieve the seventy-five percent reduction? And so there's real progress there. San Mateo County has endorsed as well. A couple of other counties are in the queue. And I think the RIC, and this is more, this is more kudos to the Regional Impact Council than All Home, we're the convenor. But I think the Regional Impact Council has been hugely successful in terms of advocating at the federal level, but particularly at the state level. Governor Newsom and his administration is paying attention to what this Regional Impact Council is saying. And his big push and priorities around homelessness did have a nexus to what this Bay Area voice said. So I think that's a huge achievement. Now we need to figure out how to make sure we get those resources, as Gail said, to the counties in the Bay Area, so that we can actually achieve what's in the regional action plan.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Mitch is up next, followed by Mayor Wilson and Mayor Cot. Mitch?
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Sperring, for bringing your group to speak with us today. I'm very appreciative. This sounds like it absolutely addresses one of the missing pieces that we've had in our county for a long time, which is the housing element of homelessness. You know, we we have a lot of other resources in our county with regard to mental health treatment and and some of the addiction, but we don't have the the housing element, so that's a big piece. That said, I think, though, that a seventy-five percent success rate is a is an incredibly ambitious number, given that fifty percent of the people we're talking about have that mental health or addiction component that has to be addressed. So to be able to address that in two years at a level of seventy-five percent, that's tough. You could do that, I think, with maybe the the low-hanging fruit, as you you were talking about in your your presentation. Those folks who are precarious and who are homeless based on an event that might have occurred in their life, and you catch them early and you get them into a situation where you can prevent that homelessness, that's your seventy-five percent number, I think. But those that are chronically homeless, having dealt with that for the last thirty-two years of my career prior to being a supervisor, literally hundreds and thousands of individuals. One of the reasons our point-in-time count is is different in our county is because we don't count the folks that are in the jail regularly. And everybody knows when that point-in-time count is going to take place. And so municipalities, on occasion, will manipulate that number because my jail would fill up with folks. And the number of count in the in the various municipalities might change during the point-in-time count. There were times when we did count them in this county. But I I'm appreciative of your of your proposals and your programs. I like Supervisor Hannigan would like to hear about the middle piece. I would like to hear about how we're going to deal with, at two hundred and twenty-six million bucks, how we're going to deal with mental health, how we're going to deal with the addiction piece, where we're going to get those resources and how are we going to get those in the county? It's great to have a house forum, but as we saw in Vallejo with the Project Room Key Hotel, they destroyed it. And we ended up, as a county, having, or we didn't, the city of Vallejo ended up having to foot the bill for a million bucks to fix that back up. And so if we're going to put two hundred and twenty-six million dollars into some housing, we need to figure out a way to make sure that that investment is protected and that when we do this, and we as communities make these investments, that they are successful and protected. Anyway, there's a lot of stuff. I got a lot of questions, so I'd love to be have you back. I'd love to sit and talk about some of those things and be involved in that process and 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 participate and and be supportive of it, because a regional effort is really what's needed here. We need buy-in from everybody. When we, when Mayor Young asked his question about our point-in-time count and it being static and why ours hasn't changed, but some of the other Bay Area counties have. And you've talked about Oakland and Alameda and some of those other counties, and how their numbers have quadrupled. In my previous work, I found that that there is like a homeless ecosystem. And that because they can move around, they go where the resources are. And so when those municipalities are willing to dump millions and millions of dollars into homelessness and resources for the homeless, that's where they travel to to access those resources. Solano County doesn't have that level of resource, so our number hasn't fluctuated because we don't have the ability to support those numbers. And so those folks go where the resources are for them. And right now, we're able to support a certain amount. It continues to grow. We need to continue to contribute resource to it, but not necessarily at the level that some of those other Bay Area counties and cities have and are able to do. That's that's all I have right now, but I I'm appreciative of you being here, want to participate and absolutely want to support.
Thank you, Mitch. Lori?
Good evening. Thank you very much for the presentation. It was good, it was thorough, and the work that you're doing. And definitely thank you to Supervisor Sperring for bringing this presentation to us and this information to us as a county. I, I, my concern was, and some have already mentioned it, so it's more of an echo that I'd like to see more of, or wondering what the thought process is related to mental health services. It didn't seem to be integrated through that. And I know that that is a key for us in this city. Our homeless count is not that high, but it is concentrated, and it's primarily people who have mental health needs and chronic homeless. And they, you know, it's pretty significant, and it's hard because they they want to be where they are. And they do cause quite a bit of issues. So I just wonder how that's integrated through. And then also, I can see definitely how if you are a county, that this would be really relevant and the resources are there or pass through you, like federal and state, and then also some of the larger cities. And so I also wonder, through the lens of a smaller city, how do we, how do we receive this information and do something about it? Or is it just really just partnering with your county? So those were the two outstanding questions, or two thoughts I had about the presentation. And but that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Mayor Cot?
Yes, I was doing my hand, but my concern was more on the mental health, mental health issues and the chronic homeless and how how big of a percentage of this homeless population do they represent? And if it's a big percentage, then it's the seventy-five percent reduction truly realistic. So that's the essence.
Any other member wish to make a comment? Okay. Well, Gail, Ken, thank you very much. Jim, thanks for bringing this to us. I'm sure it's going to come back to the board, at least, very soon, hopefully. We'll see if we can get that on the calendar right away.
Thank you also.
I know the cities.
Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you. I know the cities have been, some have formed a two-by-two and working on some of this. So we'll make sure those two things meld together well.
Thank you so much for having us, and have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gail, Ken.
Thank you. Take care.
Right, we'll now move to under agenda seven, item seven, movement to the presentation. Law Transportation Authority, and the county's collaborative on housing. Robert?
Hi, thank you, Chair Vasquez, mayors and supervisors. I'll be presenting an update on the county collaborative on housing. I'd like to share my my slides. I just have a few slides, and I'll be very quick here. But we have had a lot of work done over the years, which I'd like to present to you tonight. So let me get this word away here. So thanks again for having me. I'll be very brief. So by way of background, I wanted to just sort of give you a picture of how we started and where we're at now. Back in twenty eighteen, A-Bag, MTC developed the CASA Housing Compact, and the state was in the midst of creating some funding programs for our cities in the county to take advantage of. So as part of that, seeing that coming, the STA worked with the cities and the counties to form the Solano Housing Investment Partnership, primarily to provide technical assistance and grant assistance for our member agencies seeking to move housing projects with an emphasis on affordable housings near PBAs. In twenty twenty, we were fortunate enough to receive four million dollars through the suburban housing incentive pool program through MTC A-Bag, which we were able to advance some affordable housing. And I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. But we also were working with our member agencies to move the the RENA contract and coordinate with the cities at the planning director's level. So I worked a lot with Matt and the consultants on that. And then this year, the County Board of Supervisors, in anticipation of regional early action planning grants and our transportation nexus for the grant, we were designated as the the county collaborative on housing. And so that helped us get some resources to enable the housing elements to be updated on top of some state funding and some local funding. So where we're at now, there's a lot of information. I'll just touch, I'll just go really quickly. But in as far as the sole hip, as part of the effort that we we conducted over the years, we certainly identified several affordable housing projects with our member agencies. We did provide technical assistance for some grant opportunities. And we were able to lock in our local early action planning grants on time, which which at that time, most of the cities and the counties throughout the states were way behind. So that was good for us. In as far as the suburban housing incentive pool program, again, we we were able to get four million dollars to advance two affordable housing projects that essentially resulted into over three hundred eighty affordable housing units near the Fairfield Vacaville Hannigan Station and the Vacaville Transportation Center, which I'm happy to say that the the project at near the Fairfield Hannigan Station is currently under construction. And the project in Vacaville is being approved, was just approved by the Planning Commission earlier this week and is moving ahead to the city council. And then tonight, you heard the RENA presentation, and certainly that's that's moving ahead and concluding. And then the big, the big effort right now, and it's taking a lot of staff time, is in terms of coordinating housing elements as part of the county collaborative, we're facilitating the discussions, especially as reporting back to MTC and A-Bag as to how the county collaborative is moving ahead and the progress on that. And certainly facilitating discussions with the cities. And the the consultant that we selected was Placeworks, and they've begun doing their kickoff meetings over the last couple of months. So lots of work on that front, but it took, we're moving ahead with that. So the next steps for us, we'll continue working on the housing elements. That's going to be a big, big part of the county collaborative. But I think what we want to do is is keep it, keep our eyes and ears out for future funding. I should note that the the county collaborative in Solano is, has been, has been with MTC and A-Bag, it, we we become sort of the standard for what good planning for other Bay Area counties could do. And so as part of that, we're hoping to tap into future REAP funding. There's another round coming out, it's REAP two point O, and potentially talking about how we can leverage our one Bay Area grant funding that we're anticipating to start the process in the next couple of months. So that's sort of the update that I have. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Robert. A quick question before I forget. Given the statements that were made in the last presentation, it was needing eleven hundred homes to help reduce, you know, the homeless population by seventy-five percent in twenty twenty-four. How is that incorporated in this plan that you presented to us?
Because I think, I think the focus of the sole hip in our county collaborative, it's definitely on looking at resources for affordable housing, but not just affordable housing, but it is a big focus for us. So any opportunities that that, any grant opportunities that are made available, we we work with our cities to try and get them, you know, the technical advice or whatever we can to help them with their grant writing for it. Yeah, but so, but it is, it is an emphasis on what we want to try and accomplish with the with the group.
But if we, if we all take this pledge, it's more than just affordable housing, it is subsidized housing. You have deed restrictions and that kind of thing, that it's going to take a huge investment and a huge commitment to try to find the places. As we know, every time you try to build a facility, something like that, it has high density in established neighborhood or around established neighborhood, you run into lots of concerns from the people who live there already. Anyway, that's just a comment. I'm sure you're looking at all that. Any questions for other members?
Do you?
Aaron?
Yeah, thank you, John. And thank you, Robert. I mean, STA has been just a tremendous partner for both the county and the cities in this housing realm and also working regionally with A-Bag and MTC, and I really appreciate that in your advocacy. And Chair Vasquez just brought up the two-by-two in the previous discussion, which again is, you know, talking about a regional approach to addressing homelessness and low-income housing. I I'm trying to figure out, you know, with the funding, this, you know, signing on to this pledge, we've got Capsolano. We have this, I I don't know much about it. I just know that it occurs two-by-two that's happening between our cities and the county. I believe between two county supervisors, supervisors.
I've not been part of it.
Yeah, so I, so I, I'm, and you know, I think this is like a, kind of all the stars are aligning for the county to really look at a housing solution that, you know, here's the funding, here's the planning, here's the technical piece, here are the needs, here's where we can collaborate on all levels of housing for those who are homeless or at risk at being homeless or just need some assistance in continuing to live in a place they've called home for a long time. And, you know, here's an opportunity for all you mayors and for the county to to make a commitment to have a serious discussion about finding a comprehensive solution that addresses homelessness into permanent housing at all levels and, you know, in in a collaborative way. You know, we're talking about this in so many different realms. I really feel that there's a need to solidify the work that we're doing because it is very valuable, and we all understand the cost of homelessness in our cities and our counties. So just going to throw that out there, Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, I, Mary Young, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Supervisor Vasquez, at the beginning, you said how, whether the eleven hundred would be incorporated into the regional housing needs numbers. I think it's really eleven hundred households, which isn't necessarily the same as eleven hundred units because some of the homeless could be put into tiny homes or other types of facilities that wouldn't necessarily be the same as a housing unit. So I, I, I think I'm right on that. Maybe somebody can clarify if I'm wrong. But I think it's not quite where we'd have to count eleven hundred units on top of all the rest of the obligations that we have to zone for housing.
Thank you. Darryl?
Thank you, Supervisor. Just to maybe piggyback a couple of comments. Next year, there's going to be a lot of opportunities, so I think you should pat yourself on the back. You're the only county that developed their own RENA numbers in the Bay Area. You're being proactive in where you're putting your housing. You have all your cities in the county working together on developing their housing elements. That was the second step. They've all pulled the resources to work together, so that's a good courage sign. You've got a couple of cities that have been moving forward, affordable housing projects, and that's, that's what our subhip program designed was to help them get those. Get those, those difficult affordable housing products that just couldn't quite get over the hump. We tried it out with two projects and we were successful, both with that, well Fairfield, we showed a lot of leadership and creativity themselves. ABAG's going to be, I, my understanding is they're identifying five pilot projects for REAP 2.0. You may want to consider going after one of those pilots, working with your ABAG reps, I think you have the Chair of the ABAG Housing Committee in this room. She's smiling right now, but you have that opportunity to put together some ideas, there's also. ABAG now has the authority to be the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority. They're talking in the future about putting a measure on the ballot, maybe 2024, the polling's not real strong right now, but in the future. There is an intent to try to get resources for counties like ours, but I would encourage you to consider putting together an expenditure plan, the three, there's the three Ps. Housing production, housing preservation, housing protection. And a lot of these are, you know, caps Solano issues, other issues, but I think defining your need is really important. And if you decide you want to take on that task, I'd encourage you to do that because I think there are going to be state resources and regional resources that you could tap into if you so desire.
Thank you, Darryl. Mitch?
Yes, there's a quick question either for Robert or for Darryl, I, I'm familiar with the Vacaville project, but the Fairfield, the 380 units in Fairfield that are. Near the Hannigan Station, are those over at One Lake, where, where are those located?
Correct, yeah, the Affordable Housing Project, Mayor Price can answer right there.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct, it's One Lake.
Okay, I just, that's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure because there's another project out there that, that we don't necessarily. Or as the fifth district supervisor, I wouldn't necessarily like to see move forward outside the base. I just wanted to make sure we weren't talking about the hunt project.
Turned down.
Thank you.
Yeah, exactly.
And Supervisor, if I could clarify also, it wasn't 380 units at the One Lake, it was 147, it was collectively between Vacaville and Fairfield.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Robert, well, thank you for the presentation and the work, and I'm sure this is a, something that we all want to continue to work towards, to work on.
Thank you.
That, but that we're going to move to item seven three. Sean's going to tell us how to find the money to do all this.
Yeah, I'm going to try. Okay, good evening, everybody. Yeah, I'm Sean Quinn with the Solano Economic Development Corporation, I'm the interim president. I was, I wanted to give you an update on moving Solano forward three. And Matthew's going to advance the slides from me since my computer doesn't seem to be working very well. So what I'd like to do is, is just give you a reminder of the, of moving Solano forward three. We received a, a grant from the US Economic Development Administration in April of this year for $480,000. And that was matched with $120,000 from the county, seven cities, the Solano Transportation Authority and also with. The Soli UC kicking in, in kind money and the project basically is focused on, there we go, next slide.
What, does everybody see it?
Everybody can see it?
No.
Nope, I can see it, nobody else can see it?
Here we go.
There you go, all right, thanks. So the, the, the project is, go back to the slide before that, please, okay. The, as I mentioned, it's a $600,000 budget for the project, all seven cities in the county and STA and the EDC contributed towards it. Basically, the project looks, is twofold, the first is, next slide, the first is looking at. A short-term triage, it's looking at what is the economic impacts from COVID-19 on specific businesses and industries. And coming up with projects and programs to address those impacts. The second phase of the program is more of a resiliency, long-term resiliency program. That takes a look at opportunity sites, looks at business attraction, diversification strategies, business retention strategies. Up, updating the industry, industry cluster analysis was done as part of the movie Sol for two. And really building resilience to help us avoid future economic shocks that we had with the COVID-19. And so that's really the, the key is, I think that part is going to be the key, is how do we diversify ourselves so we don't get hit again like we did with the economic impacts of COVID-19. Next slide. And we're also going to be looking at workforce, you know, it's interesting is when, when the, the grant was put together over a year ago and submitted to the EDA. Workforce issues were not, were not as significant as they are now. Now workforce is, is the only issue you hear in corporate boardrooms as well as with small businesses. You know, all of you knows when you go out now and to your favorite restaurants, they may not be working the same hours they used to because they can't find people to work. So workforce is going to be a huge, a large part of this project. And there'll be recommendations developed on, on how to move forward with this. To help create a workforce that, that can work on this, I know that a number of cities are looking at this right now also. The, the intent of the project is to create jobs and create investment. And the key to this thing. Is it has to be, at the end of the day, there has to be programs and projects that are identified that can, can be implemented by either by the cities or on a regional basis. So that's, there's something that comes out of the project that keeps going and the, and the, so the emphasis on this thing is basically. Developing specific programs and projects that can be implemented that the cities can use, the county can use. And can be used on a regional basis to create those jobs, retain those jobs and grow jobs in the county. Next slide. So where we're at in the process is a request proposal was put together on September 14th of this year, we sent out to 32 firms. We use social media and press releases to publicize the RFP. The RFP was also sent to all the members of the Economic Development Task Force, which is all your staffs. And asked them to distribute to their contacts. We had four firms that responded to the RFP, what's interesting is three of those four firms were not on the original list of 32. So the, the social media and the staffs sending it out to people really worked. We got four proposals from Berry Economics, Newmark Global Corporate Services, TIP Strategies. And Hickey Global Economic Development Consulting. The bottom three firms are all firms that are involved in national economic development, real estate and corporate site selection processes. Newmarket, Berry Economics is based in, in Berkeley, Newmark Global Services is based in Chicago. TIP Strategies is based in Austin, Texas and Hickey Global is based in, in New York City. So next slide, please. So we put together a selection committee and the selection committee was made up of Mario Giudiani, who is the WCC Manager of Benicia. And also the Chair of the Economic Development Task Force for the EDC. Excuse me, Melissa Reeves from Visit Vacaville, because obviously hospitality's been hard hit by, by COVID. Tim Morrell from the Small Business Development Center, Heather Henry from the Workforce Development Board. Your last speaker presenter, Robert Guerrero from STA and myself. I did make a mistake in putting six people on a selection committee because at the end of the day, we tied 3-3 in terms of who, who we were going to recommend. Top two firms were Newmark Global Strategies and TIP Strategies. Then we brought recommendations from the Steering Committee to the EDC Executive Committee for Final Selection. The selection of the firm was to go with Newmark Corporate Strategies firm. The reason being is, it was kind of freefall, they are a, actually an international corporate site selection firm, but they're also the fourth largest real estate firm. In the United States and they had just purchased Cornish and Carey, for those who are familiar with real estate in the area, they're a very active commercial real estate firm. In addition to that, on their team was Chaven Concepts, Audrey Taylor's the President of that company. And Rob Eiler, who you all know, who does the index every year for Solano County and the EDC. And the Executive Committee felt that having two people with a lot of local knowledge was important to the team. So Newmark was the firm that was selected, they'll start work in December of this year and the work has to be completed by March of 2023. As part of this grant we got from the Economic Development Administration, it also allowed the, the, the EDC to go out and hire a staff person to assist us with this project. So it provided funding for basically 16 months. We went out and did recruitment and as we talked about workforce before. We went through the whole process of selecting, getting resumes, we got about 15 resumes. At the end of the day, it came down to we only had one person who was willing to come in, be interviewed, luckily that was the person we wanted to hire, so we lucked out. So we hired a gentleman, his name is Manuel Munoz. And Manuel has got a great deal of experience in data collection and data analysis in both the public and private sector. He worked for GSAC, which is the Sacramento Economic Development Organization for a year. Doing data analysis, data collection, real estate analysis as well as, excuse me, preparing packages for firms that were interested in relocating in Sacramento. He's also worked in the private sector for NEC and another firm doing data analysis and currently works in San Francisco. Manuel has a, two degrees from Vanderbilt University, one's in mathematics and the others in economics. And he actually speaks three languages. So I think we were very fortunate to have Manuel, he starts a week from Monday on board and so we're very excited about having him here to really get kickstart. The data collection and data analysis part of, of moving Sol for forward. Next slide. So the Soli UC Task Force, which is made up of staff from all seven cities, the county, the Soli, Soli Transportation Authority. And some other organizations will serve as steering committee, they're going to be the, the entity that really provides the direction to the consultants on a day-to-day basis. The Soli EDC Executive Committee and Board of Directors, which many of you sit on, will serve as the Oversight Committee for this process. It's going to be a lot of interaction, there's going to be a lot of focus groups, a lot of roundtables, meetings as well as individual. Interviews and surveys that we've done as part of this project. Next slide. So what I wanted to emphasize is that. We really encourage you to encourage your staffs and yourselves to be very involved in this process. The end result of this will be determined by how much input we get from the cities, the county. And the other organizations are involved in this, we need to come up with projects and programs that could be implemented. In order to help create jobs, retain jobs and grow jobs in this county and that's really the emphasis of this project. It was mentioned before about how much money is available out there. Wait, the way the Economic Development Administration works is that this could be the first step. Of going in and asking for additional money for the cities, for the county and for the EDC for different programs. We've already been in discussions with them about potential funding for a county-wide revolving loan fund. To provide assistance to small businesses, they provide, EDA provides, supplies a lot of money for infrastructure. I know that one of the cities in the county is looking at EDA grant for trails. And so we think that this is really just the start of a process where we really can be competitive. I've, it was years and years ago when I was a graduate student, Chico State. I was involved in Shasta County doing some work as a graduate student and. They got back, even back then, got a million to $2 million a year from EDA for infrastructure in that county. And so once you get into pipeline, you can really be competitive in terms of getting projects. So you'll be hearing a lot more about this as we move forward, but right now I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Sean, thank you for the presentation and thank you for being more just than the interim Director of EDC. Thank you for all the years of work you've done on behalf of all of us in Sol County. With that, any, any questions of Sean? Questions about the program? I, you know, Sean, we often talk about workforce and I've said it a couple of times at this, during our C's meetings in the past. I still think that we need to bring the superintendent of schools on as we talk about the workforce, but also to hear what the schools are doing or maybe what the schools need to do. Hearing from the business community, you know, I'll say it again, I think it's a, it's a top opportunity missed by not having education on this board or this council.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with you, I don't know if you remember, before COVID, we actually, when we were doing movement slot four two, we brought a speaker down from. Bu County who was a manufacturer. And he, his, his mission was to go out and get the schools involved, the high schools in particular, involved in, in vocational training. To provide, you know, workforce for manufacturing and I still think that serves as, as a real good role model for what we should be doing down here.
And even if we can't make the person, those superintendent of schools or their appointee, a member of the committee, I certainly think we could. Fashion the bylaws that have an XF issue from there, at least to sit, not to make presentations to us, but to actually sit at the dais and engage in the conversations.
Yes, critical, I agree.
It's some food for thought, anyway. Any questions at all?
Yes, I have. Thank you. Looking at, um, the slide there talks about, where is it at? On our packet, it's, there'll be interviews, focus groups, surveys and group presentations throughout the project to provide input, feedback and direction. So is that primarily for. Elected officials and staff, because you know, like how a lot of us sit on the EDC. And then there's, that's the Oversight Committee and then the Stair Committee is made up of, you know, staff and other members. So is there, is there an interest from hearing from members of the public in any way? I don't know if it's relevant, I'm just wondering if there's an interest and then too. How, you know, how public will those be in terms of, so all of the elected officials can engage versus just, you know, that's a lot for you, like the mayors or.
So there's.
That mechanism.
Yeah, so the, the idea behind it is that there's going to be a variety of ways to get input. It's, it's not just going to be the elected officials and, and staff, it's going to be the public. One of the areas we're really interested in doing is a deeper dive into who commutes out of the area for jobs, what their job skills are. How can we attract companies here to, so people can work locally, so there'll be, there'll be surveys around, around that. There'll also be a lot of interaction with the business community and getting input from the business community. And but, and we're not just talking about the major companies, but also small businesses and, and then. You're pointing about open up the public, I think it's a great idea and so we'll try to incorporate that, some, some of that in there also.
I think one thing then that might be helpful if we are doing to the public is having some type of coordinated. Social media in the sense that you guys have packets that you want us to put out, you know, on our, on our city feeds and things like that to engage or to our business contacts in terms of like. You know, in Sisson City, we have the Business Improvement District, we have a few organizations that support our businesses, being able to. When you do have something that it's packaged in a way that's easily distributed. To our own networks and each city has them, right? So that'd be really helpful, thank you.
Yeah, we're definitely planning on using your networks.
Well, good, thank you for the presentation and it's very exciting and been watching this come along and excited about it.
Good, thank you.
Anyone else? If not, we'll go back to the two items I skipped over. Anyone from the public called in? I guess I should have asked earlier. I have no callers, nobody, obviously nobody, any in a card. So we'll move on to consent. Motion to approve consent.
Motion made, Wilson.
Second. Second, all right. Just raise your hand if you want to approve the consent calendar. There we go. So we're now to item eight announcements, any announcements?
We have no announcements tonight. We'll be working with the, the Steering Committee and the. To put together the program for the new year, we don't have, as you noticed, we don't have a calendar yet for 22.
Okay, any comments from. Or C's members?
Just happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy yourself, get full of fat and loving your family.
Since we don't have a.
It's your booster.
It's your booster. And I guess we'll figure out the next set of things we'll talk about in the next meeting. I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting, thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Presenters.
Thank you.
Good evening.